Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council on, uh, at 7:08 PM. Our invocation will be led by Mason O'Kubo from the Israel First Lutheran Church of West Covina. Afterwards, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Castellanos. Please all rise.
Castellanos.
Castellanos. I said that before.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we, as you are the authority above all authorities, I ask your wisdom to be upon our city council, that they may carry out your will in guiding our city. We receive them as a gift from you, bless their willingness to serve our city. Send your Holy Spirit among us, that we might work together in harmony for the good of the people of West Covina. And thank you all for all who give their time and talents to serve our city. We ask and thank you for all this in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is anything reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any changes to the agenda? At this time, I do have a couple presentations that I want to present, so I will be coming It is on. Well, tonight, we have a couple of presentations here. The first one I'd like to present, excuse me, is to Vicky Saliga. Will she please come down forward, please? First of all, and now to recognize the recipient of the Historical Society of West Covina's 2019 Summer Fest Citizen of the Year Award. Mrs. Vicky Saliga, Mrs. Vicky Saliga has for many years been an active member of the West Covina Lions Club and has served as its president. Mrs. Saliga is very involved in helping children in our area through her work with the Lions' Vision Screening Program and provides glasses and reading development programs for underperforming second graders. Continuing her dedication to children, Vicky works with Sunrise Rotary with the Shoes and Socks Program. She chairs the Lions' Night on the Town Annual Fundraiser for the Lions and various programs. As a member of the Historical Society and the West Covina Archive Committee or Board, Mrs. Saliga contributes to the preservation and the community awareness for historic information. So at this time, I do have a certificate I am very proud to present to you tonight. Uh, what is for this, for the City of West Covina Certificate of Recognition for Vicky Saliga on receiving the 2019 Citizen of the Year Award, the Historical Society of West Covina Summer Fest 2019. And would you like to say anything?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the city staff. My name is Steve Bennett. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina, homeowner for more than 20 years. I'm here tonight to address the proposed tax measure that is being circulated by the West Covina Police Officers Association. When I look at this entire topic, I can't help myself but to think, what would I do if I was sitting up there with you guys? I see this as a potential, um, for leadership from the city council, to provide residents insight into the financial situation of the city. I have to commend Mayor Johnson on the fact that from the very get-go, you have said you've supported this tax 100%. While we do not agree on the tax, I respect the fact that you have stated your position from the beginning and why. I also respect you a lot for putting it on the agenda tonight as a mother. May I? I hope that it does go through as that. Um, I think you understand that by supporting or not supporting, you're not putting your finger on the scale, as a resident has continually said, and getting people to understand one way or the other. I think it's important for you guys to share with us the insight of the financial situation in the city, if this is even warranted. Tonight, I'm going to present to you a proposal that I want you to consider. I'm not here standing saying that, um, I'm against the tax increase. I'm here saying that I could support a tax increase under the right conditions and written the proper way. The one being circulated right now, however, does not accomplish all of that. Um, I would like you, the council, to consider placing a measure on the March 2020 ballot with the following stipulations. One, all new money generated by this increased tax must be restricted to be used solely for the purpose of the unfunded pension liability. Two, the sales tax increase will sunset or end after the unfunded pension liability is paid. And that there is no mention of any audit or oversight committee members or duties mentioned in the measure. Currently, the city of West Covina is estimating, I believe, around 16 million to be paid to Cal-Purs retirement. I will let the city manager confirm what that number is, out of the general fund based on the adopted budget. By placing restricted tax measure on the ballot, you'll be putting an estimated $9 to $10 million of new monies from the tax the first year into the Cal-Purs under a restricted system. That would allow money out of the general fund that's currently going to Cal-Purs to be placed back into the general fund and used how the council decides, for general purposes, as it's referred to. I believe the residents of the city understand that Cal-Purs is not a problem that the city council created, either yourself or past councils, that it comes down from the state. I believe that residents are willing to, under that condition, willing to possibly help the city to get out of the problem. That is a big problem in the city, is the unfunded liability. All cities were surprised with the lowering of expectations of Cal-Purs, including West Covina and many others, and we understand that there needs, this needs to be paid and funded. For that reason only, I believe the residents would support a tax measure as a restricted tax and only as a restricted tax. Instead of allowing a union to place a flawed measure on the ballot, you as a council should do your fiduciary responsibility and place a properly written measure on the ballot. Even if you campaigned on not raising taxes, we understand that you may have a slightly different opinion on this after being behind the curtain, so to speak. We elected you to speak honestly, candidly about our city, about our finances. You owe us that leadership of placing a properly written measure on the ballot and explaining the need for one publicly, especially if it is going to cost the taxpayers over half a million dollars to have any measure on the ballot. If you cannot come out and state why we need to increase taxes publicly, then we must as residents assume that a tax increase is not needed at all. Thank you. Oh, one, one last thing, sorry. I passed out Senate Bill 732. That's a report on government finance on the AQMD's proposed tax that everyone keeps saying is coming. AQMD cannot raise a tax by state law. That report talks about how if they do get it across, it goes to 11.25%. I hope you guys oppose that bill, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the city staff. My name is Steve Bennett. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina, homeowner for more than 20 years. I'm here tonight to address the proposed tax measure that is being circulated by the West Covina Police Officers Association. When I look at this entire topic, I can't help myself but to think, what would I do if I was sitting up there with you guys? I see this as a potential, um, for leadership from the city council, to provide residents insight into the financial situation of the city. I have to commend Mayor Johnson on the fact that from the very get-go, you have said you've supported this tax 100%. While we do not agree on the tax, I respect the fact that you have stated your position from the beginning and why. I also respect you a lot for putting it on the agenda tonight as a mother. May I? I hope that it does go through as that. I think you understand that by supporting or not supporting, you're not putting your finger on the scale, as a resident has continually said, in getting people to understand one way or the other. I think it's important for you guys to share with us the insight of the financial situation in the city, if this is even warranted. Tonight, I'm going to present to you a proposal that I want you to consider. I'm not here standing saying that, um, I'm against the tax increase. I'm here saying that I could support a tax increase under the right conditions and written the proper way. The one being circulated right now, however, does not accomplish all of that. I would like you, the council, to consider placing a measure on the March 2020 ballot with the following stipulations. One, all new money generated by this increased tax must be restricted to be used solely for the purpose of the unfunded pension liability. Two, the sales tax increase will sunset or end after the unfunded pension liability is paid. And that there is no mention of any audit or oversight committee members or duties mentioned in the measure. Currently, the city of West Covina is estimating, I believe, around 16 million to be paid to Cal-Purs retirement. I will let the city manager confirm what that number is, out of the general fund based on the adopted budget. By placing restricted tax measure on the ballot, you'll be putting an estimated $9 to $10 million of new monies from the tax the first year into the Cal-Purs under a restricted system. That would allow money out of the general fund that's currently going to Cal-Purs to be placed back into the general fund and used how the council decides, for general purposes, as it's referred to. I believe the residents of the city understand that Cal-Purs is not a problem that the city council created, either yourself or past councils, that it comes down from the state. I believe that residents are willing to, under that condition, willing to possibly help the city to get out of the problem. That is a big problem in the city, is the unfunded liability. All cities were surprised with the lowering of expectations of Cal-Purs, including West Covina and many others, and we understand that there needs, this needs to be paid and funded. For that reason only, I believe the residents would support a tax measure as a restricted tax and only as a restricted tax. Instead of allowing a union to place a flawed measure on the ballot, you as a council should do your fiduciary responsibility and place a properly written measure on the ballot. Even if you campaigned on not raising taxes, we understand that you may have a slightly different opinion on this after being behind the curtain, so to speak. We elected you to speak honestly, candidly about our city, about our finances. You owe us that leadership of placing a properly written measure on the ballot and explaining the need for one publicly, especially if it is going to cost the taxpayers over half a million dollars to have any measure on the ballot. If you cannot come out and state why we need to increase taxes publicly, then we must as residents assume that a tax increase is not needed at all. Thank you. Oh, one, one last thing, sorry. I passed out Senate Bill 732. That's a report on government finance on the AQMD's proposed tax that everyone keeps saying is coming. AQMD cannot raise a tax by state law. That report talks about how if they do get it across, it goes to 11.25%. I hope you guys oppose that bill, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and members of the city council. My name is Renee Chavez and I am currently a resident of the city of West Covina and also employed by the city. I'm coming here to speak in favor and thank you, Mayor, for bringing this discussion to the city council floor. I would agree with our previous speaker about not being thrilled about the ordinance as placed by the entity that actually is sponsoring the sales tax initiative. I don't like the verbiage of it at all, but I do have to say this. A 10.25% sales tax increase, it's coming. The idea is, is that whether or not you want the remaining 0.75% to stay in the city of West Covina. And you can argue about how to spend it after we have it. The challenge is, is that after November of 2020, we're not going to have it anymore. So the reality is, is that you need to be fiscally responsible and understand that right now, our current, what is it, 9.5%, none of it comes to the city of West Covina, none of it. So you have to realize that this is an important thing to keep and safeguard those funds in the city of West Covina. As far as the oversight and all these other things that we keep talking about, the reality is, the current Audit and Finance Committee is advisory. They don't make any decisions. Occasionally, they can be helpful and make suggestions, but at the end of the day, the responsibility falls within your laps through the guidance and assistance of the city manager and the finance director. So part of the challenge is, is that really, we need to be honest about what the financial situation is in the city of West Covina. It's not good. The budget you passed, yeah, it balanced, but the reality is, is that the needs, there wasn't a needs assessment associated with cost of what it takes to actually keep up the infrastructure of the city. You have buildings that are leaking, items that are falling down, parks that are in deplorable shape, and the buildings associated with them. And all of those things are not incorporated into the budget. And the sales tax measure could actually address those items. So I think it is important for the constituents and voters of the city of West Covina to implore you to really do what you were hired to do, is to be the eyes and ears of the city of West Covina, to do what's right for the city. And one of the things that it's right and necessary is that you keep the remaining sales tax here in the city of West Covina, because once it's gone, you'll never see it again. Thank you very much.
Following Jerry Potras, I'd like to call forward Jim Gravich, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Herb Redholtz.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, for placing the potential sex, sales tax measure on tonight's agenda. Taxes are usually controversial, and a union-sponsored sales tax is big-time controversial. The council is apparently not involved in this process, and that is a concern to residents. We have a union who wants a special, a general sales tax passed, and they're telling the residents how the new revenue will be spent. The union is telling us how the revenue will be spent. What they are not saying is unfunded pension liability, and that is a concern to residents. The union's initiative is basically my blank checkbook. It is a blank check. Without a plan, without the council involvement, it is a wish list that will be spent in any way. They don't mention the unfunded pension liability. That is a concern of residents. We get that. The State Controller's Report in July 25th, 2015, is a real document. This was the result of residents getting a majority of council members elected that would deal with the city's finances. We had massive fiscal mismanagement. We don't want to go back. This is an important document that we keep referring to. We want a council involved in our fiscal management, not the union telling us promises how the money will be spent. It is not the union's responsibility to determine more revenue is needed in an attempt to tax us residents. It is the council's responsibility to tell us what our finances are. The union's initiative has resulted in lies being told and aggressive behavior being directed towards residents who do not want to sign this. That's wrong. The process that we're going is pitting residents against residents, name-calling, intolerance. That is wrong. That is bad. The council needs to get involved. I am not a tax person. I'm also realistic. I understand the unfunded pension liability issue throughout the entire state. Many residents, including me, say we would and could support a measure if the council did it, restricted it like Steve Bell. I think he did a good job of outlining it. I'm not going to repeat it. There are ways to do this if we work together. Cities such as Glendora are constantly being cited. They passed it. Their council got involved. They met with the residents. They explained the issue. They got it passed with the city manager and the council doing it, not the union. Unions cannot build the trust of the residents. You can. In conclusion, I hope you will listen to the approach that Steve Bennett laid out. I support it. I have gotten emails, phone calls through the months that we've been dealing with this that other residents would. It is doable, but we need the council to do it, not the union. I am asking you to do what other councils have done. Get involved. It is, the fiscal responsibility is yours, not the union's. Please create a measure that would address resident concerns. Thank you.
Last May, a former mayor of West Covina addressed the council and announced that there was a poorly-kept secret that the public safety unions were going to introduce a tax increase measure to improve their salaries and benefits. That happened two months later. I would like to turn your attention to the chart that I have distributed, which is also displayed up on the screen. If you'll notice looking at the chart, our public safety employees make a lot of money, much more so than the people who live in this city. Not only do they make a lot of money, they have had each year significant increases in that amount of money. And yet, they have the audacity to ask for a tax increase so that they can make even more. Please realize that the vast majority of the people who live in this city make much less than that. The average take-home pay for individuals in this city is in the 30,000s, not the 200,000s. Yet, these folks are asking those folks to give up their precious dollars, because they don't have very many of them, so that, basically, the rich can get richer. That is wrong. I would like to also ask the council to look at another document that I provided to you. Now, this is actually a booklet, and it's titled, "The Pension Fund That Ate California." It's kind of a famous document among financial people in the city of, in the state of California. It talks about the corruption that accompanied the development of the current retirement system under PERS. Step by step, year by year, corrupt act after corrupt act, making essentially the whole thing a kind of graft. That's the word I would use. And I, I'm not going into the details. I provided the document to, for your education, and I, I really would appreciate it if you read the entire thing, because it tells a lot of the detailed history. I was personally involved in that history in 1999, when it was started, and I can say it was corrupt right from the get-go. The, I don't think our public safety employees understand that their predecessors negotiated this pension system, and that pension system is sucking up all of the money in California. There's nothing left over for anything else. If they truly understood it, they would know why there isn't enough money for them to actually get salary increases, because it's all going to their pensions. It's actually going to their pay. The problem is, they don't get it until they turn 50. They're not getting it right now. If what they really want is pay now, they can sit down and negotiate with the administration, say, "Give us the money now, and we'll give up some of that money we're supposed to get in 25 years." That's how negotiations work. It's called trade-offs. They could do that. As you probably know, I've been speaking a lot to this council over the years, and I always talk about bankruptcy. If this tax measure that the unions have introduced goes through, and the council elects to give them what they want, which is a salary increase, and they also try to satisfy the wish list, because the city wants lots of things, I predict bankruptcy. That's what you'll be voting for, is bankruptcy. This money has to be restricted. It has to be used only to solve the unfunded pension liability. If it is not, the city is on the road to bankruptcy. The debt is enormous. I wish people could comprehend what $130 million means. This city does not have the capacity to pay for it. That's $13,000 a person. The people only make 30,000. How are they going to do this? In simple terms, the city needs to devote every dollar they can find to pay for the unfunded liability. If they do that through this tax measure, and believe it or not, I actually support a tax measure if it's used this way. a tax measure if it's used this way. If they do it through this tax measure, then you can use the regular increases in revenue the city gets to do some of the other things you want. But you have to set aside the money, and that's why I hope you support the Mother May I that's on the agenda tonight. We need to look at this in a very serious way. We cannot afford to have this general-purpose thing pass. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, council. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, for putting Agenda Item 13 on the agenda tonight. I fully support everything that's been said by Jim Grivitch, Jerry Potras, and Steve Bennett. I've lived in cities that, you know, the whole drive was development. I don't believe in taxes, but at the same time, development isn't going to save us 100%. It's going to make our lives worse. I lived in Glendale, where we're pretty much landlocked and getting around is really, you know, troublesome. I've lived in Pasadena, where development is mostly on the east side, where I lived, and the west side by Old Town. West Covina is a lot like Glendale, not Pasadena, where you're spread out, where development can work in only influence certain areas. We have a corridor that everyone has to get to, to the 10 freeway. Already, you know, since the colonies and other developments, and people just trying to get home, you know, from south, you know, La Puente, City of Industry, using Sunset and Azusa to get home has impacted us in the 18 years I've been living here. You know, we can't keep on developing and developing and expect the same life for our children, and the same life for, you know, families. Let's not become a Glendale. I'm imploring that at least two of you, if not more, support Mayor Johnson in putting forth a measure to look, let the city council, or city manager, city staff to look and see what is the best way to put a tax measure out to support, to fund the unfunded liabilities our city has. And once those liabilities go away, sunset the tax. It's the best of all worlds. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Herb Redholtz. First, a brief respite from the tax talk for just a moment. I received my Discover magazine in the mail the other day, and I was very happy to see that a suggestion that I made a few months back to include a page with a citywide recap is there. So, Nicole, thank you very much. I was happy to see that. It goes back six months and tells the residents a lot of key items that have occurred in the city, because as we know, not everybody can show up here, and not everybody, you know, watches on TV, and people have their lives, but every household gets this. And I think it's important that they be informed, and I'm glad to see that that was, that was done. So thank you very much. And very briefly, back on the tax topic, I want to thank the mayor for agendizing this. And obviously, it's a matter that's on everyone's mind. People are concerned about it. Everybody's being kind of bombarded from all different directions, and I appreciate you, Mayor Johnson, at least putting it on the agenda. That's the first step, and I would hope that there's the votes to at least carry it on and, and see where it goes. I think that the residents deserve to know where the council is on this, and perhaps it can be, a lot of people are saying that, I mean, even those that are kind of pushing it are saying it's a flawed measure. So, you know, perhaps it could be rewritten and redrawn and be a more effective measure that accomplishes what we all want to accomplish. We certainly don't want to go bankrupt. And, you know, there's a way to, to use this money. It's common anyway. We're going to get hit with it. We might as well get our share of it and get it as soon as we can. So thank you very much for listening.
Sandy Son, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Ian Pike.
Hi, mayor and all the council members. My, all right, yes. My name is Sandy Son, and actually, I'm the public relations for the Gracias Music Foundation, and also as an international youth fellowship. Actually, it is my pleasure to invite all you and all of you in here and your loved ones to, to come to the 20, 2000, what, how is it, 2019 Gracias Christmas Cantada event. And it is the stop showing, is a show-stopping musical production that audience in, audience in over 40, 40 countries have come to cherish. And this year, the Gracias Christmas Cantada is back with the, at Long Beach on the Sunday, September 29th, in the Terry Theater. And it is a, is a, it's a, we would be honored to offer you, all of your party, and to come to this, either for the, for the, your reserve seat and either the 3:00 PM or 7:00 PM show to guarantee the best Cantada viewing experience possible. And also, another thing is that this year, Christmas Cantada come early in September. Actually, we would, we would love to explore ways in which we can work together, provide a program to your cities, such as actually in, in lots of variation area, such as volunteers in your cities event. And also, I truly want to emphasize the one part is mindset, education, training for the police, and then the fire and other departments. Actually, the mindset of that part, and also leader, leadership with the music camps for youth, and also the English camps for youth to go to Mexico and Haiti, and also Puerto Rico's. And so, the Gracias Christmas Cantada, we bring, we bring people together, such as friends and families, other communities, even complete strangers. Actually, we're dedicated to showing case that the power of the music can change the heart, and actually, and communities, and also one's lives. So I truly, we truly want, it's our pleasure, want to invite my, mayor and council member and all of the people here, please come to join our Christmas Cantada on September 29th. And as a, you will see the second part, we have invitations. Please come there, please come there to, for, at 5:00 PM for the VIP as well, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman. You'll probably get more yellow cards after you hear what I have to say. If we're allowed only five minutes, this council should do the same or within reason. We sat here till 10:30 at the last meeting regarding cell towers, only to find out they didn't have enough information and postponed it to October 1st meeting. In case the public is not aware, our spokesperson had to raise $3,750 just to be heard, and everyone that spoke did not want the five cell towers in the south side. We now have to go to the planning commission meeting in order to be heard or pay a fee to be heard by this council. Looks like this council has lost control. My second item is, the comments that people make on the council has been no response. I understand our city manager has only been here for a short time, but we have an assistant city manager, and we also have the council. Surely, they should know something. An example is, the chairman of the planning, planning commission wanted a plaque for deceased Commissioner Phil Kaufman, because he did a lot for the city, but so did a lot of other people who have passed. I believe the city plants a tree every year in the memory instead of a plaque. Let's be fair with everybody. Number three, it seems what the residents say does not matter anymore. They didn't want liquor sold in the gas stations. It was passed by the planning commission, so now any gas station in West Covina can sell liquor, that wants to sell liquor can apply. Now they want signs along the 10 freeway. Is this the best we can do? We don't need signs. We need businesses to come to this city, and businesses that people want. And regarding Item 13 about the tax increase, I think they should listen to Jerry Potras and Steve Bennett. They have the right idea, and we should take it from there. Number five, a lot of fuss was made when Mayor Protem Wu, the councilman, the councilman, the city manager, met in Temple City. I would like to know how many commissioners, including the chairman of the planning commission, and maybe even the mayor, for meeting at Denny's in Baldwin Park. I would like to know what they talked about till 1:30 in the morning. We have a councilwoman who was appointed, not elected, and she has overstepped her position. At the previous meeting, she was told, she told a longtime resident of West Covina that it was none of her business regarding the feelings on the tax increase that was brought by Glenn Kennedy, her appointee to the planning commission. Since her father states that we sit in the cheap seats, let's, cheap seats, like now, we have six council members. My thing, how things change when your daughter is appointed to the council but was defeated in the school board, how much it can go to your head. Number seven, council approved three crew cab pickup trucks for the fire department, fire department waiting for a fire to happen. This reminds me of attorney with no clients looking for an ambulance so he can get a client. One truck for our safety would be enough. Do we really need three? The fire department was overbudgeted last year, and it looks like they're heading the same way again. Remember, two seats will be open next election, and we will remember who voted for and who said what against the items that matter to these residents. Thank you very much.
Following next speaker, Ian Pike, I'd like to call forward Alfred Williams. Alfred Williams, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Ian Pike and a resident of West Covina for 30 years. I'm not going to be able to beat the last speaker. So you probably want me to sit down now. I'm here to speak to the recent Crown Castle cell tower appeal and the second upcoming hearing. In front of you, you have two stapled handouts for your reference tonight, and ideally, you have a chance to read the latter one between now and the next hearing. There's some good facts in there. I want to bring your attention to the first handout. Recently in April this year, San Francisco Supreme Court allowed the city to decide which specific areas to allow additional antennas. Commercial, industrial, manufacturing, residential area. They were concerned about aesthetics. Today, our code here does not allow in residential area and also requires 100 foot away from any residential property. The second handout, and if you could take a look at that, it's a pretty picture, actually, it's an ugly picture. I'm sorry, none of the members here could see it, but remember Crown Castle only needed 18 to make this 5G work. 5G isn't here yet. It might be here next year, but you also know, that wasn't true in the last session, when their story changed three times as far as the number of these towers that they need to make it work. And they admitted that there's a pending request to add even more towers above the five that we appealed for 3,750. I think they mentioned they're already over 20. Also, where's the proof that these five sites that were appealed actually needed it? We did ask to see the facts, but have not got that yet. We need that data. Can we see it, and can we validate it, just as I hope you all do? Crown, by their own account, acknowledged that the large tower close by, there's no need for them to put these five towers in. The large tower can feed what their needs are. That tower is less than two blocks away. You have the right to require it be aesthetically pleasing. Adding six foot to existing poles and adding poles here, there, and everywhere is not going to be pleasing to the eye. People are going to get stressed out fighting to stop this company from putting eyesaws in front of their windows. Many will not have the resources to fight them. We know what happens. This happened to me once before. The resident will complain to the contractor. The contractor will say, "It's been approved. Talk to your city." They're going to get stressed out. I see people stressed out here today with their blood pressure running high. This is going to get out of hand very, very quick. These are people that elected you, that are going to be very upset. Take a look at Crown Castle's website and the six pictures they have showing the different designs. The designs vary considerably, from what looks small and streamlined to ugly, tall, and out of place. We should demand that they trial a unit that is not six foot tall, when it does not need to be. Some of those pictures look lots, lots smaller. Don't just approve it. Dig in, look at the facts, and determine the real need. See how it looks before a blanket okay to swamp our city with this ugly structure. Please refer to Page 2 of the first out, handout. It's more realistic of what could happen. Just because Crown's going to make something pleasing doesn't mean to say Verizon, Spectrum, AT&amp;T are. We remember that Crown is supporting T-Mobile on this proposal. As far as digging in, there's a third attachment for you, for you to review in all your free time. I know you don't have any. I don't envy the positions you all have here. In summary, please don't be known as the council that made West Covina ugly. Please support those that elected you and are concerned, and put their hands in their pocket to protect this city. You all had many questions at the hearing last time and why we were here for three hours. Thank you for your great questions. Thank goodness you put the brakes on it at that time and decided for more info. If we, the community, hadn't raised the funds and appealed, it would have sailed through. Don't be bullied by big business. Let's do this together and the right way. Let's build the trust in the city council by supporting the voice of your residents. And thank you for giving me the extra time.
Excuse me, Alfred Williams.
Good evening. My name is Alfred Williams, over 40-year resident of West Covina, and I'm here about the sales tax. I know Mr. Johnson brought up the fact that he would like to have the council bring it before everyone, but bringing this up before the council doesn't really tell you whether they vote, they are for it or not for it. All it tells you that, yeah, they want to put it on the ballot. And all that guarantees you is that you're going to pay the price to put it on the ballot. I think you should let it run through its course, because if they don't get the 5,000 votes that is necessary, then we don't have to pay anything. But we are going to pay something if you tonight vote to put it on the ballot. I don't, I do think that we should have that, that discussion, and a sales tax really only... tax really only basically affects poor people. The Police Officers Association, most of their members don't even live in the city. They live out in Rancho Cucamonga, everywhere else that, but they want this extra money. And that's one thing that concerns me is the fact that, we say this as a general sales tax, but maybe the attorney can answer my question. We got specific things that we want to do on it. So now is that a general sales tax or a specific sales tax? And the reason why I asked that, there are different requirements for a general sales tax. And I may be wrong in this, but a general sales tax only requires a majority. If it is a specific sales tax, then it requires a two-thirds majority. That's a big difference. So I think, again, I think that you should let this petition run its course. You shouldn't effectively vote on letting it go. Let the people decide. We've decided on all other issues that have come up here that had to be, we had to make a decision on. So I don't think we should do anything different. Thank you.
R. Robinson followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening, council. Bill Robinson, resident. I endorse Mr. Williams' approach. Even Steve Bennett's suggestions give me a little indigestion. There's an emerging debate among West Covina residents that the nine bargaining units really are running the city and not the elected council policymakers. However, there is an opportunity tonight to assert your elected privileges and to show leadership by assuming the driver's seat on the sales tax as the people's representatives. The subject involves revenue and a 3/4% additional sales tax increment, namely circulating petitions sponsored among employee unions whose members largely don't even live in West Covina and who care little about how much it costs residents to live here. What they do care about is receiving regular hefty pay increases. This council should come to new agreements with the nine unions in the next 12 months. Before negotiations advance too far, the city needs to declare a fiscal emergency. This substantially alters the atmosphere of negotiations and collective bargaining laws, rules, and regulations to match West Covina's municipal budget prevailing reality, to match the gravity of our fiscal situation. We have no current revenue problem, but we have a big problem on the expenditure side. Our OPEB post-employment benefits fiscal whole is expanding month by month at a rate that is surely unsustainable. Elected officials in California have been making OPEB promises for decades without setting aside enough money to meet the obligations as they fall due. Every time they do so, they create debt without voter approval. Instead of writing employee unions a blank check, why not form policy to correct past council mistakes? The current council needs to assume total control of the sales tax issue and nullify the current circulated petitions so it won't have to be defeated by the residents, which it surely will be defeated. I was confronted by a petition gatherer at Stater Brothers last evening by a guy who said, "We need a larger increment of sales tax so we can quote rebuild the city." I said, "No, the city doesn't need to be rebuilt," and I walked away. What he said was dishonest, false, misleading to get my signature on his circulating petition. I'm here to recommend that nobody in West Covina should sign that petition to save the expense of either a special or a consolidated election expense that West Covina is legally bound to pay probably at next year's presidential primary election. I am also one of the residents who asked our city council to take a position on this issue. In my view, if our city's sales tax is to be increased, it is in the residents' best interest for city council, not the unions to prepare a measure. I mean, what's going on here with the union members that, most of them don't even live here, you know, trying to, and any of you elected officials that follow that approach, you're idiots. You don't want to, you don't want to follow the unions' lead.
Hello, everyone. I can't say it any better than everybody prior than me, that all we're looking for is if we could at least hear from you four. I already know how Ms. Shoemaker feels. So I would like to hear from you four and have an open discussion on the mayor's suggestion. That's all we're asking, is for you guys to be open with us as residents who put you in office. So, thank you.
Next, I'd like to call forward Minerva Avila and James Toma.
Thank you, Minerva Avila, West Covina resident. I'm here not to talk about the content of the petition that's circulating, but more about the process and your role in the victimization of West Covina residents who are being forced to sign these petitions. I've sent a series, a number of emails to all of you, all five of you, city manager, city attorney, regarding my experience and other people's experiences. And I finally heard, but I would like to read some of them. I'll start with the one I sent on September 11th. It starts, "Council Members, Mr. Carmini and Mr. Duarte, I sent my initial email to all of you on August 22 detailing my experience on August 21 with a signature gatherer for a petition that is currently circulating in West Covina. It was a bad experience as detailed below. I did not receive a reply. I followed up on August 26 with screenshots of individuals posting their scary experiences on Nextdoor. I did not receive a reply. I sent a reminder or email to all of you on August 30. I did not receive a reply. I called Mr. Duarte, the city attorney, on September 4. I have not received a call back. On September 5, I asked via email Councilman Castellanos, who represents District 4, where I live, individually for assistance on the matter. I have not received a reply. Additional postings of continued harassment and intimidation have appeared on Nextdoor. What is the city doing about it?" Chief Bell, have any council members, Mr. Carmini or Mr. Duarte, made you aware of this problem? Given the conflict of interest, how is West Covina PD handling this? In addition to my interaction with a signature gatherer that I had had at Target, I've had another unfortunate incident at my own property. I had two West Covina POA employees, as I described themselves, in West Covina POA t-shirts walking in my neighborhood. One came to my door looking for me by name. While they were a lot more polite than the individual I encountered outside of Target, nevertheless, I was provided with misinformation. Frankly, given that what I have read and heard, I was concerned that their presence at my door had something to do with my complaints to the city. Is that the case? Council Members, Mr. Carmini, Mr. Duarte, and Chief Bell, given the lack of response from the city, I am left to assume that my concerns are being ignored because I have been advocating against the BKK development. Therefore, I have no choice but to reach out to other elected officials who may be able to hear my plea and help West Covina residents. I am CCing Los Angeles County Supervisor Solis, Congresswoman Napolitano, Senator Rubio, and Assemblywoman Rubio on this email. I hope to bring to their attention to what has now become three issues of concern. Harassment and intimidation by signature gatherers, council members' willingness to do anything to push through the BKK development. There's evidence of a lack of transparency, but apparently intimidation appears on the list now. Three, pressing issues being ignored if expressed by residents who oppose the BKK development. If there are any other agencies to which I can file a complaint regarding all these issues, please let me know. Given my lack of trust in this city council, I always CC Mr. Chris Yee from the San Gabriel Valley Tribune in my communication with the city. I look forward to your response. Sincerely, Minerva Avila, West Covina resident." Within six hours, I did have a reply from Mr. Carmini. It was very short, three sentences. "Hello, Ms. Avila. The city received your emails regarding the initiative ordinance now being circulated. Your comments are noted. Concerns regarding actions of signature gatherers should be directed to the measure proponents. Best regards, Dave Carmini." Within half an hour, I replied, "Mr. Carmini, I appreciate your response. Finally, it is good to know that to get a response from the city, I will have to CC all my elected representatives. I appreciate that my comments have been noted. I do think that noting them will be helping, I do, I do not think that noting them will be helping those who are being victimized. You may need to do more than that. Just to clarify, though, are you implying that it is not the city of West Covina's responsibility to protect West Covina residents from intimidation and harassment experienced at the hands of these signature gatherers? I just want to make sure I understand. You are asking me to contact the individuals responsible for doing the harassment and intimidation and let them know that they are harassing and intimidating West Covina residents? Chief Bell, how is West Covina PD handling the situation? I look forward to your response from both of you. I have not heard from anyone. That was last Wednesday. I look forward to hearing you, to see how you address that. Thank you so much."
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council James Toma. I'm former councilman, former mayor here in West Covina, her husband. I am, I know that you've heard a lot of complaints from residents here at the podium, as well as messages and emails about the misrepresentations that are going on about the sales tax initiative, the problems with the fact of the elimination of the audit committee. The, just today, a friend of ours found out, she signed the petition in front of Walmart because she was told that signing petition would eliminate taxes or reduce taxes, right? The exact opposite of what this whole thing would do. So you've heard all this clamor. You've heard about the problems. And yet, nothing, right? Crickets. Nothing from the council in fact has been the exact opposite. It was a former meeting where the council told residents it was none of their business what this council thought about the sales tax measure, which is probably the biggest issue the city is going to deal with this year or next year. You have an appointed city commissioner who wrote the ballot initiative that's being circulated right now. You have another appointed commissioner advocating openly for this initiative. You have a councilwoman's father attacking anyone who questions this sales tax initiative on social media. And yet again, the people who ought to be responsible for the financial well-being of our city are absolutely mum. They weren't mum when the campaign was around, right? Just only a few months ago. We heard a lot about taxes, a lot about spending, a lot about finances, and yet now, crickets. Nothing. You are the people who are entrusted with the well-being of our city. Nobody else, in terms of our city finance, in terms of our police and fire, park services, you five were trusted to do this. You cannot expect a resident out there who does not have staff, who does not have legal counsel, to do this work for you. They don't have the expertise and they don't have access to that information. It is your responsibility. Think about that. Why did you run for this office? Why did you run for this office if you're just going to sit there and let other interested parties run the city? It's your responsibility. The residents just want an honest discussion. I appreciate Mayor Johnson for putting this out there. As he said before, we've not always agreed on everything, but on the big things, we do agree on a lot of stuff. And one of the things we agree upon is honesty and disclosure, right? Being trying, trying to be as transparent as possible. That's all that this measure asks. We're not, he's not asking for you to vote on this measure, but the residents and your constituents are entitled to know what the status and the state of the city is. That's it. If you are for the measure, clean it up. You know there are problems with the language in the ballot. You've heard it over and over again. Clean it up. You have the power to do that with one meeting. You can do that. If you are opposed to the measure, then say the reasons why. What's your financial plan? You rushed through the budget with almost no public discussion about that at all. So we don't know what the future financial plans are. If you are opposed to the sales tax initiative because we don't need the money, and some of you, well, there have been votes before, for example, the mayor pro tem voted for $2 million more for firefighter salaries and overtime. Obviously, we didn't need the, he doesn't think we need the taxes, right? Is that still true? So what is the status today? Only you five have that information and only you five were entrusted with the responsibility to guide the city. Show some leadership. Show some independence. Show that you know what you're doing and where we're headed. Your constituents and the residents will have a lot more respect for you if you do that.
Final speaker, David Williams.
That was very quick and a very hard act to follow. I can't, I can't say enough about what he just said. I actually came here to address something else, but needless to say, much like many things in life, once you hear some input from two or three different people, you kind of prioritize the things that you want to say. So I'll say this, and this is definitely out of respect, but needs to be said. I addressed this issue of the council standing mute about a month, month and a half ago. And generally, from what my experience has been, it's usually at the, it's usually the city manager that offers that advice to council members to pretty much just let us come up and I guess vent, and then we sit back down and we still have no idea what's going on. To my surprise, because I haven't been here lately, I see that we have a new city attorney. So that was actually addressed in my correspondence with, with council. This is going to have to stop. I don't, I don't know what other way to say it. I can't sugarcoat it. I'm very direct in when I speak, but sometimes people don't like to hear the truth and it's deemed as disrespectful. At no point in time am I intending to do that. But I think that these folks, they have a point and they have a right to stand here and ask these things of you. My feeling has always been this, and I'll use the chief of police as an example, not just our chief of police, but any chief of police. They make a certain salary to do a certain job. And I've always found it odd that when people make a certain amount of money, you always have people that will stand there and say, "Well, you know, the big guy doesn't want to hear that. Oh, well, so-and-so doesn't want to hear that. Don't take that to them. We can, we can handle this at our level." The fact of the matter is, you get compensated a certain amount to be asked certain questions and to do a certain job. You all have been elected to come here and do a certain job. It is your responsibility to the folks that are in this room, as well as myself, to be able to correspond and dialogue with us when we have questions about things. It's very disappointing to come in here and see elected officials and a city manager and a city attorney, and you have dozens of people that will come up here and ask questions or have concerns about things, and everyone stands mute and doesn't say anything. I mentioned the last time that I was here, we have over 47 cities in the county of Los Angeles, and what that means is we have 46 examples of how not to do business or how to do business a little bit better. But from what I can see and what my biggest concern has always been since I've been coming to the meetings is, why are we so long? And unless, unless I'm off base and I don't know something that happened, why do we still not have our police department functioning with a contract? The other day on social media, I see that either Claremont or the city of Montclair, whichever one, I think it's Claremont, that they're going on a year and some change. To my understanding, we have them beat. So how can we say that public safety is even a concern of ours if our officers- if our officers are still working without a contract? I came here and I addressed that before. Much like what I just said earlier, zero response from anybody. I don't know about these folks. I'm tired of it. I've never wanted to move out of a city. Well, let me back up. There's one city that was an example that I probably shouldn't use, Los Angeles. I did want to move out of there more so than anywhere else, but West Covina is moving to a close second. And why? Because of what I perceive as being a real dysfunctionality in terms of the way that we do business. So though the current financial situation may not have been any of your faults, I certainly don't see where you're doing too much different than the previous council in that you have nothing to say to us. I'm tired of it, and I'm asking you to please change the route of travel that you're going because I don't like it. These folks don't like it. We need to be an example, but we need to be a positive example. Instead of following the road of all of these other cities who choose to do that same thing as far as just not having any response to folks that come up here, why don't we be a little bit different? And let's have that dialogue and demonstrate to the cities around us that we have the ability to do that and still maintain the integrity of the process as well as keep our residents informed, and we work together to fix the issues in this city. Because I can trust and tell you that later on, these people aren't going to be this peaceful when they come up here and they address you and are not going to be as respectful. And I may very well fall into that category, although I choose not to be disrespectful to folks. I'm going to need 10 more seconds. So I'll say all of that to say this. I'm asking one last time, can we please have some sort of dialogue with the council that we elected? I didn't like the fact that we broke this city up into these sections and districts. I didn't like that. But you know what? There were some pros to it because I got to actually meet my councilperson and have dialogue with my councilperson and understand how they think and what their concerns are. But the fact of the matter is is that at the end of the day, we need a little bit more than that. I got the dialogue then. I still need that dialogue, but with all of you now. So with that being said, I respectfully ask that we go ahead and change this course. Let's be that positive example to the other cities in the San Gabriel Valley. Thank you.
Was that it?
We have no more speaker cards?
No more? Is there anybody else who didn't fill out a speaker card and like to speak? If not, okay, public comment is now closed. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem would like to make a comment.
First thing, I want to congratulate Dr. Long, okay, and for your achievement, and Ms. Shingler, Shingler, okay? Vicky, okay, and this is a good friend. I think both of you deserve, okay, this Season of the Year Award, okay? It's something you guys deserve it, okay? I apologize I didn't show up, but I hope you, if you check my Facebook, okay, we, I have a function to go. We have a West Covina student, okay, the Film Festival of, okay, and Councilman Lopez that they have been recognized at Hilton of San Gabriel with the Universal Production. So I was there, and Councilwoman Lopez was there too. And we give an award at the same time, and we gave speech to all the producer, and we want to thank our West Covina students have their achievements. So I apologize I didn't show up on your event. I hope you can forgive me because I think in 2015, I knocked on your door, and you give me nothing but respect, and they give me to talk forever, okay? And I want to thank you for that. I hope, okay, you understand sometimes it's not what you think it is, okay? And you can prove to you on my Facebook I post. So again, congratulations. You deserve everything, okay? And I hope I have the chance to go to your home, okay, to visit you, and thank you so much for your contribution to our city. Thank you.
Well, congratulations again. I did send an email just to let you know as councils, we get invited to so many events. And a lot of times, it's all in the same day, the same time. And I was just telling... I had three events that day, and I did send an email that I wasn't able to go. There was one big that I'm part of at my church. It's this Worldwide Aid to Humanity event that I did and I worked on, as well as, I know we had that, the students who did my film festival. But I just wanted to say that it's not intention. I did send an email. We get emails, we get invitations all the time, and we can't make it to all. I wish there was like five of me to be able to go to all, you know. It was also family members' birthdays and, you know, just come and just... So it was just a little bit of everything. So I know for all the events, there's no guarantee we could make it to all. And we do have other things, too. The city of L.A. had the 234 anniversary thing. It was just, you know, busy day. Actually, I was just telling my church and coworkers that October, that day, just a busy day. But congratulations again, and I'm glad you came today. So thank you, and it was good to see you. Thanks.
Gosh, for Ms. Schumaker.
I just want to switch a little bit to a different gear and address Mr. Williams. I was on the school board for 13 years, and we had oral communications. And it was the number one rule that it is oral communications for the public, that it's set on our agendas. It's not a back and forth. This is the opportunity for the community to speak to us. And so I come from that background where it doesn't matter if you're going to say, "You hate my guts. You think I'm controlled by my father," whatever, that you just don't respond because it's sacred, the community's opportunity to address us. That said, if there is an issue that you bring to us that you're not getting a response from staff for a question, I believe you were one of the ones who... The traffic on the street, if staff didn't get back to you, I would want to hear that, but I believe they did. And so that is why you don't hear me interacting. I was here for other councils who would respond to community members as a community member walked away, and the community member wasn't allowed to come back up and respond. So I just saw that as very cowardly to respond to somebody when they couldn't come back and respond to you either. And it also can lead into an unpleasant back and forth between the council member and the community member that doesn't necessarily need to be. I have a public Facebook page, a public phone number, public emails. Anybody can reach out to me when they want to. I can't guarantee that I will get 100% of the emails. I can't, you know, I have a full-time job, too. I will do my best. And, you know, Mr. San, I think he left, knows that sometimes things get lost. But I will try my best to respond. You know, it's a little harder when people are accusing you of things that you're not doing or things that you don't have control over to help with to give an answer. But we all try and be available. And I think my fellow councilmembers would agree that when it comes to oral communication, that's why you're not getting an immediate response on our thoughts and feelings. And sometimes it could be, yes, this is a public meeting, but maybe it's going to be an agenda item, and there's some legal reason we can't discuss it. There are sometimes reasons we can't respond also. And so I just wanted you to know that. I even said at the meeting where I made the "none of your business" comment, I said, "For the second time in my 14 years of being an elected official, I'm going to respond to an oral communication." And, you know, I even... I don't regret doing it because I was defending Commissioner Kennedy, but at the same time, everybody is leaving out my entire quote, which said, "At this point, it's none of your business. This is not a measure that is ours." I am not going to share my viewpoint at this point because I don't want to sway somebody who would sign their name or not sign their name based on my name. That when it becomes a council issue, which is when and if enough signatures are gathered, I will give my opinion and say what I think about it and what we should do and how we should do it. I've actually already talked to the city attorney about things that we might be able to do should enough signatures be gathered. So that is my whole statement about the tax. It wasn't "None of your business. I'm never going to tell you. How dare you ask." I was very clear on "at this time" because I do not think it is appropriate for a measure that we are not putting forward to say you should sign it or you shouldn't sign it. You're darn right. If they get enough signatures, I'm going to say how I think the money should be spent, not spent whether or not you should vote for it or whether or not you should say no to it. And further discussions that I've had with the city attorney and ideas will come forward at that time. But that is to clarify that point for everybody on the "none of your business" because that was not the whole quote. And I hope that addresses your concern, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, or Mr. City Manager, you have anything that you want us to comment about any of the public comment? Okay, that's the end of it. It will be addressed. Okay, it will be addressed. Okay, that's the end of our public comment. Now we should move to consent calendar. I have it this time. I have number five by Mayor Pro Tem. I have number eight by Councilman Castellanos, and number 10 by Councilwoman Lopez. Do I have a motion to accept all the ballots?
So move.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye, that's a 5-0. Okay, now number five belongs to Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Okay, I read through it. It sounded like this is some kind of another pension that hidden, okay? And we just come out to report to us. So I want to understand what this, okay? I'm kind of confused. We have a public safety, and we have our, okay, staff, the pension, and what this pension and what it to do and how much. I think it's $3 million additional unfunded liability. So maybe you can explain to us.
Thank you. Through the chair. Agenda item five is a receive and file report. It's an update regarding the unfunded actuarial liability for this retirement enhancement plan that the city put in place in 2007. It's a closed group, meaning it's not open to new hires of the city. And we've presented this tonight to the council so that you could be aware of this as an additional unfunded liability. The main invisible elephant in the room is the CalPERS liability. That is going to be taken up by the Audit and Finance Committee at their October meeting. This is one where the city has not been meeting its annual determined contribution, its annual required contribution. So the city's just been barely making its payments on a pay-as-you-go basis. It's not a very good picture, but I thought the council should be aware of it and would be available for questions if there are any.
So this is, okay, additional, okay, unfunded liability. So this pension, so how many people included? Who is the group that including in this pension?
There are currently 140 active employees and 25 retirees enrolled in this program. It was a supplemental program that was put in place in 2007, 2008.
So for what, public safety or our employee?
It was... It was a supplemental plan that was put in place for the city council, executive management team, not the POA.
City Council?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think we have a pension anymore, right? We eliminate already.
It's been closed, but the benefits still follow to those who are participating in it at the time. It's a bargained benefit with a plan and a trust that benefits those who were members of it at the time. So you folks aren't getting it, and I'm not getting it, but those that were eligible in those years certainly will continue to receive it. The total unfunded actuarial liability is just north of $3 million.
So this 2007, 2008?
Correct.
And totally, how many additional people we have to pay for their forever pension?
There's 140 active employees and 25 retirees enrolled in the program.
Okay. So we're closer, how much? An additional $2 million?
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on this one? Also, what is your... Can I move forward then? Make a recent file.
Do we have any way to get rid of this at all? No way, why?
Well, that was my first question, and the answer is no. There have been, I think, three cities in the state that have been able to close down these kinds of programs with the requirement to seek the protection of bankruptcy to do so. So Stockton, San Bernardino, Vallejo, that's not a very good list to be on. I don't expect we will be joining those folks in that solution to this problem.
So it's no way to untie this situation with a...
It's a promised bargained benefit that cannot be broken.
Can it be renegotiated?
Perhaps. One of the cities that tried to close their plan down, there was instantly a bevy of lawyers that appeared on the scene and they were trying to figure out that very question, you know, can we, can we stop it? And the plan administrator, the trust administrator were all wondering, you know, if they were going to get sued also. Short answer is yes, everybody would get sued. And it would require every single beneficiary to accept a haircut, a reduced benefit or a diminution of it. They, in those cases, ended up settling for the amount of money which was in the plan. It was barely 25 cents on the dollar. In the case of West Covina, there isn't even that many pennies on the dollar available. And so I think it'd be very unlikely that you'd get people to agree to give it up.
Is there any more questions? If not, we have a motion. I'll make a motion, the receiving file.
So move.
So move.
5-0?
5-0, okay. Okay, the next one is item number eight by Councilmembers Castellanos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, so this was regarding the digital billboards along the 10. After driving around and seeing what we already have there and listening to feedback from residents, I don't think it would really benefit us to do that. I don't think it'd be friendly to potential developers who might come in, maybe at Eastland or anywhere else, who might have bigger, better plans for whatever it is they're doing. I'd rather be patient on this and lean in favor of potential future businesses who may want to come in here. I think we already have enough digital billboards. Hasn't been popular from what I've heard. And I don't want to compete with those potential future businesses. I think it also may be a distraction, so I think it would really require further study. That's, that's my thought.
Any more comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I, I have a concern about this agenda too, okay, and regarding, okay, if you're driving, every day I'm driving, morning I drive into, okay, on the 10 freeway to Temple City and then I come back home, okay, at 6, 7 o'clock and so doing this for another 30 years, okay, and I see the change of the freeway and if you counted, how many, how many people over there, this countless, it's a lot, okay? And, and I don't know how many, how is enough, okay? So, so right now we want additional for what, six or seven or the billboard, okay? And I don't know, that, that will be, okay, not upgrade our city image, possible become a pollution with additional more of big gigantic LED sign, okay? I have nothing against any business, but I don't know, okay, I kind of agree, okay, how the city get into this kind of business. I think we should maybe leave the, okay, business, I think 10 freeway potentially, okay, in short time, we should have a lot of development, want to do something, try to make our, okay, West Covina Plaza or Eastland more to be nicer, okay? And maybe we need to leave some room for there, okay? But again, again, is the worry about, okay, the freeway advantage, okay? In, in the movie you see, okay, the metropolitan and nothing but a bunch of LED sign, cannot even see anything and what is the point, okay, to make our city extremely kind of ghettoized? So we want to make West Covina beautiful, okay? So we should maybe reconsider, okay, about this issue rather than just right away approve this, okay? And, and so we should leave this for the future development, okay, for there and approved by the planning commissioner rather than a package thing and we don't know what the impact for the future. So, so I have a problem with, with this.
I don't have a problem with this because this isn't saying we are going to amend the code. It is kind of answering the questions that Councilman Castellanos and Mayor Protem Wu are bringing forward, which is, are, are these allowed? How many would be allowed along this corridor and what we can do? It's not saying that we will do anything. As I recall, when this first came before us, we actually talked about partnering with somebody like Eastland who isn't allowed to have them. They are only allowed to have billboards that advertise the stores there and see if they would be interested in partnering with us. We talked about talking to the plaza to see what they would possibly be interested in and also just seeing where it could happen. Because there are requirements on federal and state level on how close they can be and everything else. And so I see this as really a study on what could or would be allowed versus we're going to do this. It's just a furtherance of the discussion that we had already started. So for that reason, I don't have a problem with getting information. I mean, when we get that information, we could say, we don't want that many, so let's amend the code so that a hole we may have that would allow somebody to come in, we close. And if we want to allow it here, change it to allow it here and close up over here. I mean, it's, that's the way I see it.
Is there any comment? No?
No, I think this is a good point, but if we still go back to the, we just recently approved on the planning commissioner, okay, approved the, the big, okay, sign of Jelly Bean, okay? And they go to condition use permit, okay, to get that gigantic sign over there, 5-0, and then they, they welcome this business come to West Covina to increase maybe another 200 jobs and plus, okay, take about 28,000 of the space of that gigantic building. So, so it's still case by case. So the point is, okay, if we have a, okay, some other business coming in, okay, they want to give the LED sign, I just still have to go to the condition use permit, okay, to have a planning commissioner to approve. Okay, I, I think it should be independently, individually to approve rather than now we get a, okay, blanket, okay, with this sign. And so, so, so in that way, potentially, we're going to have so many signs on, on our freeway and that is the potential problem that I'll again, so, so I cannot support this.
The issue with that is we already have billboard ordinances. This would be looking at our current ordinances and deciding whether or not we want to initiate a code amendment. And so I don't think Jolobee is a good example because that's somebody's lettering on a building versus an LED billboard. And so I want to avoid the situation you're talking about, which is by right, somebody is allowed to have a billboard because it's in a section that you're allowed to. And maybe we as a council don't want billboards there so that we close loopholes rather than leaving them open or at least look and see if we have any loopholes.
Anybody else? At this time, I'd like to make a motion, so we move this forward with those stipulations. I have a second. The move, item number eight forward. Bring it back with, initiate the code amendment. Thank you.
I did, and it's to initiate the consideration of the code amendment.
Have a call please.
Councilman Castellanos?
No.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Passage 3-2. Our next item is number 10 and that's by Councilwoman Lopez.
So I don't mind the Student Transportation of America, I'm glad you're getting a good deal. The only thing, my concern is if you can go back to renegotiate the yearly increases, California Bus Services has a possible 3% increase in year three. MCOCH, none proposed, but with the Student Transportation of America, it's 3% to 6% per year based on CPI. So if you can go back to renegotiate that, then I don't mind passing that as well.
Thank you, through the chair. The recommendation is that you'd be authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract. The contract is included in your packet, but if you want us to negotiate that aspect of it, we'll be happy to, to do so with the, with the company.
Is there any comments? If not, would you like to make a motion with those stipulations in it? It's up to you.
Yes, I'll make a motion to renegotiate that with those stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll second it. And now we have a motion, a second with the stipulations that Councilwoman Lopez stated. Okay, okay, we have a call please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
That's the end of our consent calendar. And now we shall move to council's request. Number 13 is, I brought this one forward. You know, it's a mother may I to have it brought back for discussion. We've heard from the residents, we've heard from residents many a times saying, we have five council members up here, not commenting one way or another on this tax initiative. And I felt it was time that this council said, yes, it's time that we bring it forward for a discussion. This, what I'm asking for tonight is not a vote to pass this or to put it on the ballot. It's for you to bring it back for the next council meeting to discuss if we want to put it on the ballot, us, what we want to do with it. And I think that will let the residents know exactly where we stand. You know, we were elected by the residents to take up these items for them. That's why they elected us. And if we sit by and let a union do it, then we're not doing our jobs. Now, we can all agree to disagree on things, but we all know that the unfunded liability is going up and up and up. And if you don't believe me, you can talk to Mr. Grivitch. The man, I've talked to him and he knows what he's talking about, you know? And when he says there's a chance of us, we do nothing, we could go bankrupt in a few years, you know, I believe him. So we need to do something. Do we want to sit back and let this tax measure that is presented by the unions to go through? Or do we want to take the initiative and say, no, we want to do this ourselves, where we can put the language in it ourselves, that will do exactly what was said tonight? You know, if, if there's going to be a tax that goes through, it has to go through that is going to make a difference. It's not going to be wasted. The money's going to go for the unfunded liability and it's going to free up the general fund money. So what I'm asking for is support by tonight for the councils to let it move forward and then we'll have a complete discussion on it. So that's my motion, I have a second on it.
Mr. Mayor, okay, I think you overheared talking about what this is about. And then you already know, for four years, I'm very consistently against any tax hike. Yeah, so, so basically it's really no point, okay, to bring this mother may I, nothing but grandstanding.
Three other council members?
No, no, let me finish, let me finish. When you talk, when you're talking, yeah, when you're talking, I didn't cut you, okay? So you want to do this, this is your right, but at the same time, my right to talk about what I think. Yeah, but what I'm, you can, you can talk, okay? Let me finish my talk, then you can cut it in. So my point is, this is very simple. You won't know that my stand, okay, about this. I'm against tax hike. I don't think sales tax increase can help us. And I don't think we will get to bankruptcy at all. It's just a basically scare people tactic. Okay, so I, I said one more time, okay, for four years, okay, we are trying to do is trying to fix our city, okay, the spending issue. At the same time, we try to find the revenue. The revenue is not go by tax increase, revenue should be, should be by the business, should let business pay forward, okay? And we are going to tax people for those people that we are not a tourist town. So most of our people, old and poor, they will be, will be suffering. I have no problem to pay more taxes, but the point is this, why are we doing this? Why we have to put this mother may I? I against any tax initiative, I'm proud to say that. So in that way, I against your mother may I.
You know, I don't have a problem with you being against my mother may I. No, I don't have a problem with that, but for you to say I'm grandstanding, you just did the same thing. You've been going all these, you've been going all these years saying that you're against tax hikes. Everybody in this room, everybody in the city knows you're against tax hike. But you don't talk for the other three council members. That's not your prerogative. Each one of them are a leader in their own minds. It's up to them to yes, yes or no, not what Mayor Protem Wu wants. It's up to them, yes or no, not what you want. Now, just don't interrupt me. All right, I get the last word, I am the mayor. When you're the mayor, you get the last word. All right, now here it is. It's okay, whatever it is. But here it is. I brought this up because of this tax initiative that was going around. Residents said, and they've came up to this, what even they said, we have a council up here that's not saying anything. I'm not grandstanding. Everybody knows how I feel about the tax thing. I made no secrets about it. Last year, Councilmember Toma, Councilmember Worsaw and I tried to vote to get a tax initiative on the ballot. You voted no on it. We know where you stand. That's the side of point. But this is for the residents of West Covina. This is for them. This, I think this is for them to decide. Now, if we sit back and do nothing, they get the signatures on it, we pay $600,000, we write a blank check for $600,000 that we have no say-so how it's spent. And I don't want to do that. I want to have some say-so in it. Now, let me finish, please. If anybody wants to talk, I'll let you talk. I'm the, I, I can say what I want to say. But it, we've heard it's $600,000 to put this on the ballot. We can agree to agree, agree on it, but we can do it. This is what I was told and this is what I'm repeating. I'm not grabbing $600,000 out of the air. This is what was told to me. Now, one way or the other, the city is going to pay for it if the POA put it on the ballot. If we don't have a choice, we have to pay for it. So, I agree with it or not, if you want to vote no, then you vote no. If you want to say, don't let the thing pass tonight, then that's telling every member out there in the resident, in the city of West Covina what you think about us putting the tax on, not about what the POA is, that you don't agree for us to put it on the tax. That's your prerogative, you're individuals, you vote the way you want to vote on it. But to me, I want it to go through, but I don't see if I have the count on it. So it is what it is. I made a motion, and if I can't get a second, then it goes from there. But remember, I do get last word, so if you want to say something, I will speak afterwards.
Okay. I really can't believe that you as mayor sat here and said that if this tax passes, the council will have no say in the way the money is spent. It shows a real misunderstanding of your position and the position and responsibilities of the city council. If a general count, if a general tax passes, it comes into our general fund. The city council is the one who decides where that money gets spent. And so maybe you misspoke, maybe you did not. I would hope that it was a misstatement and you'll clarify that that's not what you meant. Above and beyond that, I will not be voting on bringing forward anything prior to the expiration date of the time for the people who are already gathering signatures passes.
And I do, I do apologize on that. You are, I do stand corrected. We would have something to say to it, like that, and I do apologize for that. I missed, sometimes we get caught up in the moment and when I was told that I was grandstanding, I just got a little frustrated. But, and I do apologize to you for that, for bringing that up, thank you. But, but in the long run, that we heard all the negative stuff that was said about the gathering of this measure. The negative is, is out there that, will this pass? I don't know if it will because of the way they want and the residents, they don't like the negative saying that we're going to eliminate the audit committee, they want to replace it with something else. That's beside the point, and I understand that, I understand. No, no, please.
It complements what you're saying.
No.
Which is, if they get enough signatures, there are still things we can do.
No, no, no.
And so I would just ask that you not make this, if we don't bring it forward now, that that's the answer, because it's not the answer. The answer is, there are people, including community members, police officers, firefighters who spend days at a time in our city, who are gathering signatures for this. They have until October 17th to gather those signatures, period.
Assistant City Clerk, what is the final date for those signatures? Do you have that?
The only date that we have is that we have to consolidate with the Board of Supervisors by the 6th of December, which means we have to have this item to council for approval to consolidate by our second meeting in November. Prior to that, we'll need 30 days, business days, to verify the signature. So we're looking at needing the petitions back by very early October.
Okay, good enough. Okay, so like I said, you know, it is, the residents sign it. If we keep going the way they're going, I, a lot of those say they'll be speaking negative about it. So the chances of them getting the signatures made, and I have also heard that there's been residents that say they want the signature taken off because of the harassment and the lies and sale. People are signing those petitions to have their names removed from it. So what happens? If we don't have it, this tax is lost forever. Because if this thing moves through on, in November, they put the other tax on, then we're going to have to live with the consequences. Okay, I made a motion, do we have a second? Seeing none? It dies. Okay, the last thing I'd like to say, I'd like to make, I'd like to have a mother may I brought back for a letter opposing SB 732 for the AQMD for the tax initiative. So please, if you would have something up, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned.